I'd like to call this meeting the Joint School Board Assembly together. It's our meeting for March 13th, 2015. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Mr. Trainey.
Here.
Ms. Gray Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Dabowski.
Present.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Present.
Mr. Hall. Mr. Hummer. Ms. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Starr.
Yes, I'm here.
Who do you have to do the school board?
Ms. Mr. Robb.
Present.
Mr. Perez, where are you? Ms. Augustine. Ms. Davis. Ms. Plunkett.
Here.
Ms. Boden.
Mr. Robb.
Present.
It is spring break for us.
I know, it's Friday the 13th. What else do we expect, you know? Let's leave it on that.
Sorry, boss.
So, we have minutes of our December 5th meeting. Item 4A. Do we have a second on the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Any objection? Ask unanimous consent? Please, Jennifer, I'm sorry.
I was just looking at the agenda, there's a pledge in here.
Yes, we do need to do that. Thank you, Jennifer. Since you reminded me of that, would you need the pledge, please? I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any addendum to the agenda? Next item in business, item 6A, ASD Actions Policy Decision Regarding Voter Approved Bond Spending, requested by Assemblymember Dabowski. Ma'am.
Yeah, well, this was just an update, I believe, from ASD. They were evaluating their bond policy. We've discussed this at the last two meetings, and I think we were going to get an update on what their new policy was going to be, or the evaluation, the status of that voter-approved bonds, what they do with additional bonding authority after, if they don't spend it.
Yeah, we had a presentation from our legal counsel on our authority, and they told us we were meeting all state laws, and we haven't changed our policy. We're interested in continued discussions with you. We act similarly as the municipality. We have broad authority in this area. Whether the muni and the school district want to constrain their authority to only use in certain areas, we're interested in discussion. We've not changed our policy, and we have been advised by legal counsel what we're doing as to me.
Yeah, just because it's legal doesn't make it right. So, I'm interested in that conversation. I think from the municipality standpoint, that's something that I'm looking forward to for us changing as well. I think if we bond for $60 million and we go to build something, if we don't use all of that $60 million, if we have $10 million left over, I think it's appropriate to go back to the voters and say, can we transfer that $10 million of bond authority to a different project? I think that's appropriate. But I think that's the kind of the conversation, I thought that's where you guys were going, to see, you know, if you were going to change that policy. So, I would, you know, from a municipality standpoint, that's something that I'm going to be pushing further.
Have you introduced?
I have not introduced anything yet. But, but I would love to hear from the school board, you know, how, I mean, I know in the past, there was a time when ASD went back to the voters for reauthorization of unspent bond money, and I know it failed. But, I was just curious to see, yeah, I was just curious to see if you guys had had any more thoughts or ideas, or maybe a new way we could approach this. But, you know, to me, it was really a collaborative, I was really curious to see if you guys had come up with anything new, or any ideas of how we could address this. Because it would be nice if we could come together on this issue.
I think we should, we should have the same policy, and so, we're interested in discussing it with you. But, we, when we first wanted to make sure what we were doing was, was legal. But, but yeah, so we can keep it on the agenda, or if you want to frame it with the, with the legislation proposal, we're interested in the discussion.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Flynn, sir.
See, I have to say, policy is a point for which practice starts. I think, as we continue this conversation on the subject, we probably want to leave the legal framework the same as it is currently, lest we get ourselves into trouble. I think it's reasonable, however, to develop best practices that we follow, where we decide, you know, if there's $70,000 left over from a project, we can, it's okay to reappropriate that, but if it's $70 million, we want to seek voter reauthorization, without necessarily changing the legal framework. And so, that's, that's, I think, the conversation we need to be having. And, and it could be, you know, the school board members and a couple of assembly members, it could be a couple of, three assembly members sitting in a room, figuring out what they think is best for you. I'm not thinking about the details, but that's, I think, the conversation we'll be having.
Ms. Plunkett, ma'am.
So, policy has been very busy this year. We, we had a backlog of, a backlog of items, and we still have a backlog of stuff we're working. But it is something we've had a little bit of discussion on, associated with that. I would love to work with you on doing something. I would like to be at the table. Well, just the same, we were with the ethics piece, I would love to be at the table with you on that. So, and I think we're getting close to the end of the backlog, but there's still a couple of things left.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the open conversation.
Mr. Flynn, I also think we need to look at the city side of doing this, because if we're casting stones towards the school district, I think we'll find we've been doing the same thing over various administrations. Never happened, right?
Mr. Trainey?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to articulate that I'm not casting stones at the school district. I think, you know...
You're too sensitive from last night, aren't you?
I think that, you know, both of us can improve in this area. So, to me, the first part of any discussion like this, that will absolutely impact ASD, needs to start with conversation. And that's why I bring it forward, and I...
I think it's a great idea. I think with the new administration coming in, gives us a chance to get ASD and the city together, both the legislative and the executive branch, to take a look at this issue. Because I think both sides have been doing it for a while. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Steele?
Yeah, on, on that particular topic, there, there's not going to be as many bonds. Going forward, it doesn't appear. And, and we certainly wouldn't want to have to get into going back to the voters if we had some money left on a road project, and we wanted to transfer it to a different road project. But, the scale point that Mr. Flynn brought up was certainly appropriate.
Anything else on this issue?
No, but I would like to...
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I was a little slow in getting up to the agenda. I would like to add item 6F, which would be an update from ASD, or commentary from ASD regarding the AP card audit.
Somehow, I thought that would come up.
I think we'll get there today, won't we?
I think we can get there.
Thank you.
Actually...
Ma'am?
I was going to bring this up in the budget conversation.
Okay, that's fine, if we want to...
No, 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 no. Did I miss 6E?
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'll, I'll go for 6E.
I need stronger glasses.
I'll go for, I'll go for 6E.
Eat your brownie, Jennifer.
Oh, I know.
Eat your brownie, your brownie.
I'll go for 6E, and 6-E or fiscal plan. ASD.
So, I'll stay, if you're doing 6-E or fiscal plan, I'll do, I'll stay with F.
You're going to make the 6E, 6-year fiscal plan?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. By the way, I have something here, everybody. The clerk's office has just put out a new list of lobbyists, so we might want to keep this, so when you get telephone calls from people, you can check and see if there are registered lobbyists.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, appreciate it.
The code, interestingly, says that the clerk shall publish from time to time a directory of lobbyists and distribute it to, it is published all the time on the website, but we're distributing it to you from time to time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next item in business is 6B, fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you and the President.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to kind of update you on our budget. I just want to start by thanking the Assembly and the voters of Anchorage for their support for public education. You know, and I think to piggyback on what Mr. Dabowski mentioned, the open dialogue that we're able to have and the conversation, I think, is what has helped us come together and support our community, as well as our students. So, what we wanted to do today was to give you kind of an overview of our budget that you'll be looking at on the 24th. And, in support of that, I also want to take some time to walk through the progress that we've made around our strategic plan and Destination 2020. This strategic plan is focused on our students first, and so, the resources that we have with this budget from the past as a school board, and it's coming before you, mirrors that emphasis on student engagement and students in the classroom. So, to begin with, you're all familiar, I believe, with our Destination 2020 plan. We have six goals that we're focused on achieving, and the first one is student proficiency. Ninety percent of our students will be proficient in reading, writing, and math. We know that when our students are engaged, they're successful, and we're actually seeing those results in our, our scores. About three years ago, we implemented response to instruction practices, providing students with the resources and support that they need at the right time for each individual student. We've also taken a look at our assessments, we're integrating data, you know, we're having data-driven conversations to ensure the support of those students. And, the nice thing is that we're continuing to see improvement. If you look at our reading and writing and science scores, they're continuing to go up. Many of our grade levels are showing the highest results they've, they've seen in the last few years, last five years, in fact. The one area that has not gone up has been our math. But the significant point to make there is that we recently adopted a new K-Aid math curriculum. For those of you who've been on Assembly for a while, you remember the conversation about our old math program, and we recently adopted a new one. We've been implementing that. And when you implement something new, there's always a chance that you're going to see different results than you would see in an old system. Usually, it takes some time to get moving forward, students aren't accustomed to the information, teachers are even trained up. But our results actually were not as, they were not as low as we thought they could be with the new implementation.
Superintendent, Ms. Johnston has a question for you, ma'am.
Something came to my attention, I'm not sure if it's real or not, but with data collection, and as we go to the new testing, are we able to, to continue to use, or, I mean, is that all this data that maybe shows improvement, non-improvement, flat, whatever, is it all thrown away?
It's a great question. I don't know if you remember an earlier presentation I gave to the Assembly, but it, it really focused on, we have new standards, new assessment, and we're going to have a new baseline. So, we, we don't have the data, we will not have the data moving forward that we can actually compare and correlate and see that progress. We're going to have to establish a new baseline, because there are completely new standards that this data's testing us on, using a new system. It's now online, that we'll be conducting our assessments, and so, the baseline will be different, you'll be comparing essentially...
So, how many years was ASD doing Common Core?
We adopted Common Core in 2012, I believe.
So, you would have at least two years of Common Core that's virtually not the same, but somewhat to the new testing data.
The difference is the state has adopted new standards, and we are being tested, last year, we were tested on our old system. They are now, this year, for the first time, implementing an assessment model that evaluates on the new standards that the state has adopted. We don't assess our students on our district standards, we assess on the state's standards. That's the material we use.
I'm just, you know, with data, I would think there'd be some data mining that you could actually, I mean, there's got to be some correlation between the two, that you should be able to get some value from it.
I'm not, I'm not a psychometrician, and I can tell you that that's a complex task to do that. We do have internal data that we can use, based on, you know, the individual student in the classroom, teacher, and what they use to drive their instruction. But that's not been the, the data that we've used to measure the proficiency, that we relied on the state measurement for that.
So, I mean, it won't make any difference for me, I'm, I'm a short-termer, but in the next couple of years, when we're doing budget discussions, really, you have nothing to base the budget discussions on as far as...
I, I would make a strong exception.
No, no, but I'm just saying that the data, I mean, you don't have, we won't have this.
You'll have a new measurement and a new assessment.
But it'll be starting right now.
It'll be starting from a new framework.
Wow.
It doesn't, it doesn't remove the fact that we're still using data in the classroom, and we're using a system in the classroom to make those decisions on how we support students. What we, what we've used for our Destination 2020 has been a state measurement, and with that transition, that's, that's what has to happen.
Anything else, ma'am? Yes, sir.
But you will have, you will have some measures.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the graduation rate, SATs.
This is one of six goals, and it's what we've identified as the, the assessment for student proficiency.
In subject matter proficiency.
In reading, writing, and math.
Yeah. And then, just to comment, we also have AINs Web.
Right, that's the internal system that we use, that is a screening that we do with our students three times a year, to make sure that the teachers are actually providing that right, just-in-time instruction for students. So, if they're making progress, or they have a need for enrichment in a certain area, or they have a deficiency in a certain area, we can direct their resources to supporting them. There are layers, there are layers of how we assess our students, and layers of how we communicate those assessments. This is one that is using the state system, because that's what the state reports on.
Houston, so proficiency is a term of art here, I'm sure you got that, but the state gets to define what is proficient at a grade level and what is... In addition to the measures, the SAT and other stuff, we're looking at growth that is not just how many of the students got to a proficiency level defined by the state, but how are our teachers, programs, schools, and overall, are we moving people?
Superintendent, question, is this testing by the state used all over the state of Alaska?
Yes, it is.
So, bush areas get the same test, June on Anchorage, same thing?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Required assessment.
Good. Please continue, sorry.
No, that's a good question.
We have questions.
It's a, it's an important distinction to make, that we will have new, new results this spring, and we have identified six weeks of when those tests are going to occur in our schools. So, we are seeing progress with our, our students, and, and to go back to the idea of, you know, we use this assessment to measure our proficiency, we also look at other data to determine how we're making progress in the proficiency of our students. We recently conducted, oh, we recently, a recipient of the National Math and Science Initiative grant, called the MIZI grant. Two of our schools, Bartlett High School and Eagle River High School, are the recipients of this grant, it's in its fourth year now. And really, what it does is it promotes the professional development for advanced placement or pre-advanced placement teachers. So, that's its primary focus. And what we've been able to do is we've been able to build that capacity district-wide. So, they've had a summer training for teachers in advanced placement, and we've had more than 200 of our students participate. So, that's the first thing, is that district-wide, we're getting teachers trained on advanced placement courses and information. The second thing is that they have students in Bartlett and in Eagle River who are having increased participation or increased opportunities now because of the focus of advanced placement. And at Bartlett High School, they've had a 90, I think a 91% increase over four years of number of students who were taking AP classes and achieving a level of three on their test. Over four years, I mean, it went from, in 2010, they had 23 students, and now, this past year, they have 44 students. So, we're seeing that significant result in that particular school, and they're, they're near the same percentage of increase as in Eagle River High School as well.
Superintendent, Ms. Gray Jackson has a question for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, it usually takes work to apply and then get a grant, so I'm always impressed when I see grants in any organization. But my question is, is it a federal grant?
It's a Department of Defense grant. It's, it's focused on military populations, and so, the idea is that, you know, military families are somewhat transient in their moves, and trying to create those opportunities that may not exist in other areas, they felt that bringing forward the National Math and Science Initiative, those students in those high military populations would still have access to that. Because sometimes when they move, you know, they, they go to a location that they don't have those resources available.
If I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's right.
So, was there a local match?
No, there's no local match.
And my, and last question is, how much was the grant?
I don't have that exact information, but I could get it for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Is that a one-time grant? Superintendent, can we apply for it next year? How many year, how long was the grant for, just one year or what?
I'll, I'll get that for you, I don't have that.
I appreciate you looking for these kind of grants, because I hope the military kids that come in here.
It's been a very positive grant, and we've worked very closely with, you know, the schools on ensuring that the students are getting what they need, and then, like I said, being able to build that capacity district-wide has been nice as well.
Could we have applied that to the Chugak High School, too? Or did, when you go to Eagle River, did you mean both Eagle River High School, or?
It's Eagle River, and they selected based on the military population. There's a certain requirement of data that they needed to, in order to allow us to receive the grant, and those are the two schools that have the requirement.
Thanks for doing that.
So, another area we're focused on in terms of student proficiency is in robotics. And I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to participate in the state robotics competition in January, but they had a, held out at South High School, where they had a Lego League competition. And STEM, STEM is something we talk about at the secondary level all the time, but we've recently been focusing the emphasis on STEM in our elementary schools. And you see in the picture here, Bear Valley's Lego Robotics Team, the Brick Masters, won the state competition just a couple of months ago. And now, they'll be headed to represent Alaska at the World Lego Robotics Competition in St. Louis, Missouri, in April. The exciting thing about this is that this is often coordinated by parents and volunteers. I mean, you have school personnel who obviously sponsor and support, many of the classroom teachers give their own personal time to assist with this, but it's the community coming together. The sponsorship that we have for these kinds of events are unbelievable. You know, GCI is involved, Alaska Airlines is involved, many other agencies wanting to support this. And you have the students learning from actual engineers, they have a mentor who comes in and works with the team. It's not a one-weekend project that goes on for many months, where they learn about robotics design, they learn about collaboration, teamwork, perseverance, creative problem-solving. And so, it's just a really great way to see students engaged in learning and excited about real-life hands-on activities.
Superintendent, would you let us know how they do down there?
Absolutely.
And we'd like them to come to the Assembly, we'd like to recognize your achievements. So, when this is done in April, would you have them come to see us, please?
Yep, I'm sure they'd be happy to.
We'd like to recognize them citywide, and their efforts.
And not to give only credit to these students, there were many, many teams there, from all over Anchorage, and these are the ones who, these students were the ones that just won the competition. But we had elementary, middle school, high school competitions going on throughout the, our district, and again, just to emphasize that when we talk about success of our students as they graduate, it starts early on, it doesn't, doesn't start in high school, it starts in, you know, in the home, the minute it transitions into the elementary schools and middle school.
Mr. Steele?
Yeah, for those of you who haven't, haven't been in to see, see the Diamond Engineering Program, boy, it has, it has blossomed. I went, I visited Diamond not too long ago, and, and went in there, and they were, you know, they had 3D printers that were printing, printing gears, making gears and stuff for robotics activity. It's, it's amazing. We're doing some great things at our school.
We've expanded that to South High School and Eagle River High School also has an engineering emphasis. So, that brings us to graduation. You know, one of our, our second goal is that 90% of our students will graduate from high school. I think it's important to note with this that this is not an end goal. You know, certainly, this is an accomplishment, a milestone for, for many students to check off, but we don't expect them to graduate and then be done. We expect them to be ready for whatever it is that they desire, whatever path they take, whether it's entering the workforce, entering post-secondary education, being productive members of our community, and leaders in our state. This is an expectation we have, it's not a ceiling for any of our students by any means. Some takes more challenge, and sometimes it's more challenging for some students than others, but again, we're fortunate to be able to provide those resources so they can be successful. You see, we have our highest-ever graduation rate for fifth-year graduates, and what that means is that those students sometimes experience challenges in their life, whether it's a medical challenge, or through transitions, or just struggles, they take a couple of months longer to get their diploma. But we're grateful to be able to first make sure they get it, and then, second is to have those resources to support them in that. And some of the ways we're doing it, certainly, we have had a, take a break from summer school this year, we'll be offering it for our students in the secondary level. We do online courses, we do in-person courses. Online courses are for those who need original course attempts the first time, those students who are unsuccessful, we do face-to-face. We're also offering support at middle school and elementary school. We've modified our elementary summer school program to be very specific for students based on data needs. And it was that way in the past, but it's a very, very targeted and narrow focus this year we're proposing for summer school. We've also believed that the early literacy emphasis we have has helped with graduation, you know, trying to build those students' skill sets early on, so that we don't have to come back in the later years and provide remedial support or, you know, target our resources there. We can do it early on, let students build up their confidence, build up their skill set, their foundation, and then it just opens so many more doors for them. So, we're not just focusing on our seniors as they graduate, we're focusing, like I said, communicating with parents at the home, building those expectations, and collaborating with them, and then moving through our elementary and middle school years. We've also had great partnership, partnerships in the community. We have partnered with ANSEP, which I know you're all familiar with, they've done great work with the National, or the Native Science and Engineering Program, and we now have students working on the Summer Academy, where they're building a computer, dissecting squids, testing structures on earthquakes. So, it just, it, it complements nicely what we have in our science curriculum in the district, and it is an extension out into the community, and maybe some real-life application for students getting that experience outside of the school setting. So, we have a number of students who are participating in that program as well. The next goal we have is attendance, and there's been a lot of ongoing, really, conversation about attendance. This is the, this is the one thing that we've really had, seen some really good success with. Our goal is to have every student attending school at least 90% of the time. And when I explain this to people, and I tell them that means that they can miss two days each month and still meet the goal, the usual reaction is, that's a lot. And I agree, that's a lot. But our goal is to achieve that, and then set another goal once we achieve it, a higher goal. But, the, the efforts that we've made in the last couple of years, we've, we've had an increase in our attendance from 74% to 78 and a half in just one year. There's a great deal of strong community, community support for this. Conversations that I have with committee members are behind this, and understand that there's, there's a need for this, not only in our schools, for students to be successful, but when they enter the workforce, making sure that they have those habits in place. The last thing an employer wants to do is to talk to someone about their attendance, you know, they should be talking to them about how they advance their skills, you know, and, and become better in their, their field, not, I need you to come to work. And so, that's what we're doing, is we're talking to students about that, we're, we're demonstrating the value of education, showing them that when they come, this is the experience you get, and you don't want to lose out on that experience. Talking to parents about it early on in our elementary grades, establishing those habits, community conversations, what can we do as a community member to support attendance in our schools? So, again, letting people know that there's a great value, and there's a great need to establish those work habits and practices early on. You may be familiar with the support that we've had from 90% by 2020. Most recently, our student advisory president wrote a compass piece on attendance, and she also helped sponsor through the 90% by 2020 organization, a... also helped sponsor through the 90% by 2020 organization, an art contest for students to again, create that awareness about the importance of attendance. And so we've had a really good response to that. I'm looking forward to seeing what the winning design will be. It's supposed to be a message or in this day and age, or probably a text or some kind of computer-generated graphic that highlights the importance of attendance. And then they'll receive a bigger prize and have their design on different displays, stickers and posters and things like that. And then I want to share with you this story here of this young man here with his parents in the photo. That's a Vegas Middle Schooler, eighth grader. And I think you're all aware that we've had a community partnership and there's prizes that are given away as recognition or incentives, whatever you want to call them for students. Well, this is Sean Mateus and his parents at Vegas Middle School this fall. Sean was recognized at this school by a business partner for having perfect attendance in the first quarter of the school year. And what I did before they announced who the winner was, I went to his parents and said, I'd like to know a little bit more about your son. What can you tell me about him? And they're both very humble and obviously proud at the same time. And they said, well, he's a great young man. He's usually the first one who gets up every morning and goes to school, you know, with excitement. And I said, well, tell me some of the classes that he likes or what are his interests? He loves sports, he loves his applied tech class. And they started talking about the class and what he liked about it. And it's a simple question to ask the parent, but what, I guess reinforced, what it reinforced for me is just the importance of having those parents connected to their child. And at a middle school age, it's easy for that separation to occur. But this family made a concerted effort to talk to their child about what their interests were, they could communicate that. And it obviously made a huge difference in Sean because he values education and he's getting, you know, great rewards and benefits from being in school every day. So I just want to come back and refocus on, you know, this idea of attendance being important. We get it in the schools and we understand it and we're trying to create environments where students are engaged and they want to be there. And we also get the need for that conversation to happen in our community with our families. And so talking to families early on about the importance of attendance and the value that you get from it. And you'll see later on when they get into our parent recommendation piece, we are having our kindergarten roundup now in every one of our schools where a prospective parent or an incoming kindergartner will be able to go to the school on a certain date in time and get an orientation or an introduction to what kindergarten is. And that's happened in the past, but we've had a very targeted effort to communicate this systemically across the district. So we now, you can go on our website and you'll see all the different schools and the times when they will be doing a kindergarten orientation. And a big part of that orientation is establishing those habits and routines for students and for parents, which is if they're not sick, they're in school. If they are sick, let's talk about what we can do to help prevent that, you know, making sure that they're getting healthy food, that they're getting a resting, that you have routines and structures. And we've got community support for that. We're working with preschool agencies, you know, community agencies on promoting those practices and really encouraging the responsible parenting and approach of working with children. So parent recommendation is the next goal that we have. 90% of our parents will recommend their child's school to others. We have an 88% global rating right now. That's through a survey where parents basically tell us, would you recommend your child's school to someone else? We'd love to have a 100%. We recognize that there are going to be parents who have different opinions or concerns maybe that come about and it's our job to try and address those concerns as best as possible. You'll also note that we had our, visit our schools month in the month of February. Last year, we had more than 1,600 visitors in our schools. This year, we had over 2,000 visitors in our schools. And again, getting positive feedback from those tours or visits, understanding exactly where parents are in their knowledge of education in Anchorage. You know, we, as educators, take for granted some of those things that go on in the schools and we forget that not everyone knows that. Their only experience has been when they were in school, which for some is 20, 30, 40 years ago. So trying to bridge that gap and get them to see that things are changing in our schools and we want them to be able to feel comfortable in asking questions and be a part of the system. And I mentioned already again that we're looking at doing, continuing that communication about our schools and building on the recommendation from parents by our kindergarten roundup, which again is systemic across the district. We have all that information public so that people can see when those meetings are going to be held. The next goal we have is focused on safety. This is the only goal that we have that's set for 100%. It's non-negotiable, if you will. We have 100% of our students and staff feeling safe at school. Every day, we welcome 47,000 students into our buildings and we want to make sure that we're taking care of them, not only based on the facilities that we have, which is important, that they're living in Alaska and some of the weather that we have or the potential risk of earthquakes and things, that we have those structures sound and safe for our students and staff, but the emotional side of it as well, for students to be able to feel safe and take healthy risks in school. That's, I mean, that's what we're about, is giving them an opportunity to take a healthy risk, challenge themselves, maybe stretch a little bit and be there to support them. And so we work on not only to structure the facility of the schools, but the social-emotional part of it with our students, making sure they have those good people skills, able to communicate, they understand how they can manage themselves as well as know what to do when someone else doesn't manage themselves very well. And I tongue-in-cheek kind of say, you know, if all our adults had these skills, you know, the world would be a much different place. So that's what we're working toward is giving students these skills so that when they grow up, they can, they will be our leaders and they can know how to manage things very well. One of the key things to note about social-emotional learning is that academically, students with social-emotional skills score an average of 11 percentile points higher on standardized exams. Again, it's that reflective, so they have a self-awareness and understand where their strengths are maybe. And I think that is seen in some recent research around social-emotional learning.
Mr. Flynn, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Brad. Find social-emotional skills, how do we measure that?
How do we measure it? Well, that's always been a good...
Look, you're shaking hands?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it. It's understanding how to manage yours, you know, it's understanding your feelings first of all and knowing how to deal with those emotions. It's being able to read other people and what their feelings were. But we've broken it down into four areas for social-emotional learning in the district. And we've got 15 different standards, I guess, that we teach students.
Do we measure that?
We measure it through survey. We've got a connected inclimate survey that the students will take and ask questions like, related to social-emotional questions. I don't have an example here in front of me, but it's basically a response from a student and then they take that and apply that to the standards. And then we also measure based on what we observe. I mean, I think you've run into people who have strong social-emotional skills and maybe some who have...
In my business, we say, how do you know if you're dealing with an extroverted engineer?
Yeah.
When he says hello to you, he's looking at your shoes.
Yeah, so that, and it's interesting because that is, going back to the workforce, when you ask employers, what do they want in students or what do they want in our graduates? You know, they want people who come ready and they don't have to tell them that attendance is important. They want people who are problem solvers, who are critical thinkers, who, you know, obviously are proficient in reading and writing and academics. But it's that social-emotional piece where they can really work with anyone, they can get along with people. So I'd be happy to do a presentation later for you guys on social-emotional learning, but there are specific standards.
I'd just like to see a copy of the test, of the survey. I need to kind of see.
Okay. Mr. Steele has a question.
We, it seems to me, if my memory doesn't fail me, which sometimes it does, that we've been doing this a long time in ASD and that actually we've had national recognition with regards to social-emotional learning program through great state schools and others. So we've been doing a good job.
We belong to a collaborative district initiative through the Castle Organization, which is a collaborative for academic social-emotional learning. We're one of, I believe, eight districts now that are leading the conversation about social-emotional learning. And we have been doing it for a while. I recently attended a conference with other superintendents from Memphis, Chicago, Cleveland, talking about how do you, how do you do exactly what Mr. Flynn asked? How do you demonstrate that social-emotional learning? And that is, that is a challenge to some degree, but they use surveys for the most part to do that. And they have researchers who are taking that data and then connecting it to students' academic progress. Because, you know, as a former teacher, I used to say to people, you know, when you sit down with the parents, they want to look at the right side of the report card, which is usually where you see the A, B, C, D's and things like that. And I'd say that that's important, but it really starts with the left side of the report card, which is how do you manage, you know, things yourself? What is your, yeah, what is your attitude?
Thanks.
And you have to, those two are not separate. They are, you have to have one in order to have the other. Because you can have people who score very high on their achievements tests and then are unable to work in an environment because they don't have those skills. And I think that's the most disappointing thing, to see things like that, to see adults like that where they just can't function. They have the intelligence academically, but they don't have those skills to function. So the other part I mentioned with safety has to do with the school facility and the structure. We had a 6.4 million state grant a couple of years ago and we actually are finalizing those funds and putting them in our schools where we've got most of them completed, but we put duress alarms in every school, which are panic buttons that report directly to the Anchorage Police Department. So we've got a good working relationship with APD in allowing us to use those or have those in our schools. We're not interested in using them necessarily. We've got electronic door locking mechanisms in every one of our elementary schools, again, which allows staff to lock those front doors from a push of a button or to open them from a push of a button. And then we also have intraschool communication improvements where we've got reliable two-way communication through our phones or intercoms and radios. So we use those state funds to do all that. And what I'd like to do is transition to showing you a little video that was made for, for the purposes of just highlighting what we're doing with Destination 2020 and how we emphasize safety in our schools.
So if you're a visitor to Mountainview Elementary, you would come to the main front entrance, which is marked as the main entrance. You would see an intercom button there and push that button and be greeted by somebody from the office staff who would ask you why you needed to come in the building. They've also looked at you on the security camera, assuming you have a good explanation, a good reason to come into the building. If everything looks okay, then that person is led into the building and is directed to come to the office to check in. Once they get to the office and greeted by somebody from the office staff, and we do have a school check-in system that, where they record their name and their reason for their visit and then it prints them a visitor's badge.
So again, the idea is not to keep people from interacting in our schools, it's to ensure that we know who's coming into our buildings and if we have a need to not have people come in for a variety of reasons, then we have that capability by the push of a button. And schools are working through this transition as well. You know, the last thing we want is for the public to feel like they can't come into our schools, you know, for parents to feel like, what's this now? I have to sign in every day and check in? And those procedures have been in place for a while. So it's just transitioning folks into maybe this, this new format of where you push a button and you come in. But our, our schools are very welcoming and we're just so grateful to be able to have those practices available to us in our schools. Thanks to everyone who supported that. I'm going to let Ms. Plunkett take on the next goal, which is operational efficiency.
With operation efficiency, we use that to help build our budget using our Destination 2020 goals and more looking at targeting our services and managing those resources to improve efficiency, which we've worked on in a couple of areas and have worked with the Assembly on as well and appreciate your support in that. The first one is online registration. This is the first year that we were able to offer parents the ability to register their students online. And not only did it help the parent opportunity to get them signed up without having to come in and fill out multiple forms, which I'm sure that you did in the past.
I did it online this year. It was awesome.
Yeah, but not, so not only was it a win-win for the parents and the students, it was also a win-win for the district because it took less resources from the district as well. So I think that was a very positive, so glad to hear that, Amy. The next item that we've worked on is some of the LED lighting upgrades, which has been quite a savings and an energy savings of between 20 and 50% less energy on the ones we've changed so far, which means our light bills are less, which means we can put more money into the classroom and less into, in energy costs. And then I also want to thank the Assembly for the collaboration with the, oh, you have a question before I ask?
Oh, no, go ahead. I'll come afterwards.
Oh, okay. Regarding, regarding the People Mover, and I think that that's been really positive. We have it only at East High this year. I think we are looking at other schools where the routes will work. But I can tell you, my granddaughter is at East High and it's allowed her to stay, this is my second grandchild there, to stay after school and participate in after-school activities. And she's super engaged this year. So I, and she's not the only student I've talked to that's used it. We've had huge numbers for that piece there. So if it's regarding the People Mover, I'll stop.
It just took me six years to get to this point. And even that final little pushover was a little tough, but we did it. And I will never see what my ultimate goal was, but in case somebody wants to continue this process, the ultimate goal is I feel that we could merge another shared service, People Mover could actually be the transportation for a number of our high schools, Diamond, West, East, Bartlett.
We'd actually have to have chief service in Chugak.
Well, I, you know, eventually, but what it would be is to be a synergy for the People Mover and the school district. And I've always been told it could never happen, but if anybody wants to take this on, I think then you have flexibility as far as classroom days. You wouldn't have to necessarily have high school students who are brain-dead at 7:30 in the morning, starting at 7:30. So I'm just throwing it out there, some of you newbies, please take this on. We got it into East and it, and because of it also, we have new technology. You can track where the bus is, when it's coming on your iPhone. We should be there, we should be able to do this in a couple of years.
And we also had a pilot at West over the last couple of years before it was completely enacted into East this year.
I just, I just want to compliment Jennifer. She said it took six years. I was on, I was in my position like six weeks and so it happened a little faster for me.
It's great, Jackson, that's a comment.
But I do think it is a great partnership and there is still some cost associated with it from the district's perspective, but we are looking at trying to expand that because what we have been able to do is exactly what you said. We freed up, East High School has taken, modified one of their days so that they can offer more professional development for the teachers and they have a flexible schedule for students now. If they did not have this service, they would not be able to do that because students, many of our students rely on transportation at East High School. And this now creates greater flexibility for them, not only for school, but for work, for activities before and after school, and the ridership has increased.
And with more ridership, then eventually you'll have bus transportation out in Chugak, Eagle River.
Since we helped pay for it, it would be nice.
It's great, Jackson, and then Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Ms. Johnson, I'd like to congratulate you for your work. And I also like to remind you that you still have another year, understandably. And I'm a big transit advocate, rode the bus for 21 of the 33 years I've worked here. So I'm really more than happy to work with you if you'll have me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, sir?
You don't have to answer it now, but I'd just be curious to know how the state people certification funds can, can flow, if they can, to public transit? Because I know it's a complicated issue and it's a bit of a football down south this time of year.
I'm thinking of not answering that question right now.
Okay, so just going back to the People Mover, the, there is a cost, but to me, it's relatively low when you look at the student engagement that we've been able to accomplish, as well as students, like you said, that can come later. It's something I've been interested in for a while. It, it's something I've been interested in for a while as well. So, I'd like to see it and continue and move forward and expand.
Mr. Steele.
Did they have to add buses or did they just fill up the ones that were running a regular schedule? Did they change schedule?
They didn't add buses.
Yeah, we're just using the regular bus system.
They get passes.
So, you just fill them up, yeah.
Yeah, it's a pass, just like.
Yeah, I, yeah, but I didn't know if the demand was such that, that they, during those peak periods, if they'd have to run another bus through there.
Lance came and gave a presentation to the school board as part of our recent meetings and he didn't mention anything about challenges with the buses, but I do remember seeing the statistics in the ridership.
Yeah, he was pretty happy about that.
So, the, the other thing that, that I would like to thank the Assembly and the administration on is the internal auditor. That, that's something I worked on for a couple of years, but not six years, thank goodness, before we, we got that in, in place. And, and really, you do need that, you do need that segregation and, and it's a, it's a service that's, that's valuable and important to the school district to have in terms of what are we doing wrong, what are we doing right, how do we do, how do we improve, et cetera? It's been, it's been a, a great service and I truly wanna thank again the Assembly and the administration for working with us on that because it has been, it has been valuable. The P card, we'll, we'll discuss that later. But that's not the only one we've had done. We did a food services inventory audit that is just finishing up now. We've worked on student addenda, we've worked on our student activity fees, the cash control. We've, we've worked on a lot of areas and I think we've also worked on some purchasing areas as well. So, Pete Raskin and Brenda has been very helpful in helping us work that through, and we do wanna say thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We'll pass it on to him. Pete and his staff does a great job.
And then I talk.
Where are you at, Pete? Oh, there you are.
I, I, I thank them all the time for that, for, for, because it is, it's a very valuable service and, and especially as it counted in internal control, it's, it's very near and dear to my heart. So.
Anything else, ma'am?
Well, next screen. Oh, okay, there it is. So, the, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the new money that we got this year with HB 278. And we worked on our early literacy efforts for both class reductions at the primary level, mostly K through 2, as well as literacy coaches and interventions, interventionists at 12 of our schools. And what I like especially about this piece there is it's a train-the-trainer model. You know, the, those coaches are going in and working with our, our teachers as well as the students in, in the classroom. And that initiative will, will continue and I think is, is, is pretty, pretty positive. We also added some additional pre-K classrooms, which were, which have been essential for our, our kiddos that need just a little bit of an extra push to be ready for kindergarten. And then we've worked on our science material refreshes, finally upgraded our science kits, which I think were the same the whole time you were there, Tim. So, so that was pretty good to have, have a refresh on those. As well as a lot of our, our IT resources for all of the initiatives and, and for the testing that starts later on this month. And then we've also been able to do some additional professional development for, for our teachers to kind of help move them forward. And then charter and alternative school support. I also wanna thank the, want me to stop now?
Oh, no, no.
I wanna thank the Muni for, for the 86 teachers in last year's budget and, and also just comment with this year's budget, we've been able to keep our pupil-teacher ratio, the PTA, the PTR stable, and especially in the lower grades for the whole. And to me, if, if you can keep your PTR stable, that, that does help our, our kids learn. And wanna appreciate you for, and thank you for your help in that area.
Before I go to you, Jennifer, Ms. Davis, thanks for being here. Appreciate you joining us. Ms. Johnson.
So, the, the 31.8 million, how much of that was one-time only?
It was all, the, the board, I mean, the board viewed that as one-time money outside of the student, the student allocation. So, you've got that over three years, essentially.
So, but, so were the preschool classrooms, were, did that come from that or?
Yes. The three additional preschool classrooms came from that.
The one-time grant that's for three years.
For three years. So, you're saying that you're going to do the preschool classrooms over three years as a one-time-only expense?
Yes.
Unless, unless it's so successful that the board looks at it and says, we really
need to keep this program and this program, so, if I'm not speaking out of turn here, Mr. Cross. But, you know, it's something we'll have to assess. If we have something that we've done that's, that is, is really successful, our student, for our students, what do we do instead, so, so that we can keep it?
I, I.
Ready for me to further?
Ready.
So, as a part of our, our budget development, you know, same thing with, with your process. We had, had several meetings last year. We had three formal listening sessions where we worked with our, our parents, teachers, students, principals, other key stakeholders, business leaders within the community to go through the business development process. And as a result of that, the high-level theme was preserving class size as well as our, our high-value programs. And that was kind of the common theme through all of our, our stakeholders.
The, so, in an effort to keep that PTR classroom stability, it actually resulted in this budget and a slight uptick in teachers, a slight downtick in staff. And the next slide will show that we've essentially held our overall staffing constant over the last two years, but there's been a, a move to reduce positions in administration and other subjects and put it directly in the classroom. So, there's been a, a shift over the last two to three years towards direct classroom instruction and out of administration.
Ms. Johnson.
Could you just repeat what you just said? Because it seems to me that you've increased your FTE.
Can we go to the next slide? And then we'll come back to that. So.
Yeah, you've, you've increased your FTE.
Exactly what, what you asked. So, total overall staffing levels was 5,739 in 1213, down 300, almost exactly 200 positions there. It has upticked here, about that 60 that we had on the last slide in, in, in teachers, but the, the real cuts have been in general and administrative support.
Yes, over time, but we've now increased it.
Well, we've got it almost exactly at 13, 14 levels. So, that's almost exactly at two years ago. And this 60 teacher difference here, I'll talk about it in the previous slide. But you see that we're almost exactly at two years ago staffing level, but we've increased teachers and decreased overall administration.
And then this year, you, you cut the administration by four.
Right. This year, in effect, after a lot of discussion with the public, it was a, we just don't know enough about what's gonna happen statewide, everything from the doomsday scenario to.
Right, I, I'm, I'm impressed. Well, we'll continue this conversation.
Well, yeah, and so, almost exactly where we were two years ago, but heavier on teachers and lighter on general administration and staff. And so, back to the other slide, the, but it was 60 new teachers in this particular year, and they're in three primary categories. They almost fall easily into 20, 20, 20, and 20. 20 was charter school teaching positions, and that was direct money that came through from the legislature directly to charter schools. And in fact, we didn't hire those teachers, but they're still ASD employees, but charter schools used the new money to do new positions. So, it wasn't a board decision, that money has to flow to them, it should, and they made their own staffing decisions. And then these 43, the, the slide labels, district managers, that is our decisions, are in, again, 20 teacher chunks, if you will. 20 of that was just keeping the PTR stable. We have a, essentially a flat student population without the 47,000 range, but it's getting a little younger. And you can have a little higher class sizes in high school than you can have at kindergarten, say. And so, when you have a slightly younger student body, same overall numbers, but slightly younger, you need a couple more teachers to keep that PTR stable at a lower number for kindergarten and K through 6. So, that, those 20 teachers essentially were to keep that status quo of PTR. And then another 20, just over 20, in us fixing a problem that we created in middle school over a distinction between elective and primary teachers. And they're having a difference between how they were treated on having an extra planning period.
Planning period, yeah.
And so, 20 of those fixed that problem, 20 kept us stable in PTR, and 20 was direct money that went down to charter schools. But essentially, we were trying to have, use reserves to have a status quo, budget status quo over the last two years to see what's gonna happen. Every, we, we got in, in our public input, everything from dramatic fire sale cuts to we need increases in these areas and some were justified. And we just wanted to, in effect, hold where we were in the 13, 14 year and see what happens with oil and, and the new gap.
Well, we'll, we'll discuss that with the sixth year.
Okay. Oh, and then in December and January, you may have heard in the news about our difficulty in filling certain positions. Generally, we're finding it more difficult to recruit than it was four or five years ago, just with, with teachers and other positions. But in certain areas, it was even, it was more acute. And that's in special education, in IT professionals, in some other specialized areas. And to address that, which is either a hiring problem or a surplus, a projected surplus, depending on how you wanna look at it, you know, I, I use the example publicly and then in the Compass piece about if I lose one of my great employees at, at my business, that can be a projected surplus, but it's really a hiring problem and I really need to fill that position with somebody. We, in response to that, hired back a recruiting position that we'd left vacant or had eliminated, and that's allowed us to fill some, but not all of those hard-to-fill jobs. And I said primarily in special education, but some other specialized position. And then this budget continues that attrition in administrative support at a slightly slower level, but four central office positions and one staff support.
Mr. Boski has a question for you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Croft, you indicated you're gonna hold the budget at the 13, 14 year and see, see where we are. At a recent Budget Advisory Commission meeting, I heard Mr. Higgins present the fact that, and if I'm misinterpreting this, just please correct me, but he presented the fact that the projection from ASD, essentially, you guys were gonna, basically assume you're gonna essentially get the same funding that you got from Juneau last year, when in fact, Juneau has already indicated that's probably not the case. So, do you have more in, in information? Or, to me, I'm trying to wrap my head around how you're building a budget on numbers that the state has already told you, you're not, they're not going to fund at the same level that they did last year? Or are, do you have new information?
No, I don't have any more information than you do and we're all, we're all trying to predict, but they've not defended the reason. The governor has made a commitment to preserving it and then has in this, in his initial budget, had some reductions. The subcommittee process is just starting in the House. I, I don't have any better crystal ball than you do. And that's why somewhere between anticipating and doing dramatic cuts ahead of schedule or filling needs that we know we have, we try to just hold them.
So, just one follow-up. If the governor, governor put forward a budget with reductions, did ASD take those reductions into account? And is that what your budget's predicated on?
We haven't, because there's been, not been a final budget, we haven't, we have assumed that they're going to do what they said they would do in 278, which is hold us flat, if you will, or at the 278 schedule. We're hearing everything that you're hearing and more, but nothing has been decided by the legislature and the governor.
Anything else, ma'am?
If I can help clarify, I think the question to Mr. Chairman, I think what Ms. Boski is speaking to is there was formula money and one-time money. And the governor's proposal reduced, allowed the one-time money. I think her question is, does this planned budget take into account that reduced submission to legislation?
It, it doesn't yet, and it goes back, I was gonna interrupt, but everything seemed to be going along. Ms. Johnson and I both share a, shared interest in shared services and have had discussions on the difficulty of this one-time money that they gave. We, we struggled with that mightily because we want to put it into teachers, we want to put it into ongoing programs, and we know the particular areas of, of pre-K and early literacy that we think move the, the needle the, the farthest on, on student performance. But if we go out and hire, what was threatened can happen and it, it goes away. So, we, we tried to do an in-between. We made these three-year pilot programs. Now, we love them very much. Ed and I have had a number of discussions about if they take away the one-time money, which was what the governor's proposal is, not yet the, the legislatures, do we really eliminate programs that we think are doing fabulous good at the earliest stages of child's development? We put it in that way, but it's an awful choice because we think you will see, we, we framed them as three-year pilot programs and wanted to present to you and the legislature in three years, look at how good these have been. And we, the preliminary data says that that'll come true. That is, we're seeing some good stuff initially. So, ending those now is gonna be a very difficult decision for us. So, we did not cut out our very new pre-K and early literacy programs. We are having that discussion. If that becomes to pass, then we'll either, it'll either come out of class size, which we've been able to hold constant, or these new programs, which we do love. And that's a very difficult choice for us, that we have not anticipated their decision and made already, Mr. Boski.
Ms. Johnson has a question for you, ma'am.
Actually, I have, I'm sorry to impose on you, and I didn't quite get through the whole book, but I got through most of it. Sorry. The Attendance Center, that's admin, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. And I was just, you know, I kinda went through the different aspects of the Attendance Center just to see where it stood as far as where salaries increased and did, so I'm, admin's doing sort of flat. Page nine in this, there was a decrease in your proposal for your salaries for special ed. Not much, just some. Is, and that works in with the state funding. And I, I understand a lot where your fund balance came from. And I remember back when there was the huge outcry as far as special ed and special needs and it was put into the funding formula. And you're still in, in, where do I want, abeyance to those funding, right? And are we still, is that still in effect? Do we still get increased funding for the back?
You gotta multiply for special education, intensive needs.
And, and, right, and that's, we don't have full employment there.
We don't have all the people we'd like in those.
So, that's still, there's an aspect of that still kind of goes into other, I, they can't go into other funding, but we're going to fund balance.
What we attempt to, we still have to provide services for those students. So, what we're ending up doing is, in some cases, contracting with people to provide those services, or we're having long-term substitutes. So, the funds are being utilized, or they do utilize to the degree that we've been allocated or appropriated. It's gonna depend on the individual student. Not always do we receive the amount of funds we need for a student who receives intensive services.
In this, in various departments, there's unallocated funds. What's that?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Ratliff to come on up and speak to that document. I don't, I don't know the specific area.
Oh, there's, there's.
Do you have a specific page you're looking?
Um, page 70. Page seventeen where, no, unallocated elementary resources.
Unallocated elementary resources.
Special ed, unallocated special ed resources, that's why I asked about special ed.
Sure. And these is gonna be, you know, we set a certain number of holdback teachers that we can deploy out to schools when enrollment shifts come in, once in the fall, whenever we determine if a school has more enrollment than what they would, we have projected, then we have a teacher we can hire, a position already budget we can fill and send out to the schools. So that's the unallocated organization codes that we have on page seventeen.
So it's, it's a placeholder for...
So, if I could, if I could help. When I was the elementary executive director, I had a certain allocation that I was given for the students, the ratio. I didn't always release those allocations in the spring, because I waited to see that the enrollment was met for the district in the fall. And so sometimes you have your target of being twenty students and you have eighteen, you know? Or sometimes you have your target being twenty and it ends up being twenty-five. So then you have to say, I need to do something now, and you take that holdback and you apply that. And we try and do that sooner rather than later. So if we see those numbers come in, which the nice thing about the online enrollment now is that we get that information sooner, as opposed to waiting until August when parents come in and now we finally see them. So it's a, I think it's a responsible practice to not allocate all of your resources and then go in and say, oops, you're short five students over here and you're five here, I'm gonna take those two teachers in August and move you around. But they get deployed. They get deployed on either an early summer, August, or they get deployed when those numbers change at the school level.
And then they, this is, I'm just curious, the ASD I school, is that...
That is our online education program that we offer for students. It's housed over at KCC.
And then they were, well, let me just go, bonus certificated and bonus classified? What's that?
What page?
Page twenty?
Page twenty, bonus certificated, bonus classified. I believe that's part of the national teacher certification that we offer for teachers when they become...
So this is a set aside in case they become...
This is within the teacher's contract for that certificated.
So there's almost five million set aside for that?
Right. I believe there's a fifteen hundred dollar bonus built into the teacher's contract for fifteen, sixteen, in return for one percent increases over the last three years.
We gave them less of a salary increase in the bonus to compensate in the last negotiations. And in all of our negotiations over the past thirty years have been at PAL thirty-seven and municipal targets.
But you did, you basically did a longevity bonus, ten years, if you're in there for three years, you get a bonus.
It's been the third year of the contract that all the teachers got, right? So it's...
So long as they're employed.
Some kind, I guess. It's not a longevity, but it's built into the, instead of a two or three or four percent increase, it was a one percent increase with the bonus in the third year.
Anything else, Ms. Johnson?
I guess that's, that's it. I, you know, I kinda went through and highlighted all the increases.
I can come back to you, ma'am.
We've got a little, no, I'm not gonna bring them up, I just noticed them.
Mr. Steele, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is, you don't build a budget on rumors. And we don't know what the state's going to do yet. The other difficulties that I believe the school district has is the fact that the years don't mesh. You know, your academic year goes across to two fiscal years, and so that creates challenges. I, you know, when you, when you set aside money for teachers or hard-to-fill positions, you don't know what's gonna happen over the summer. You don't know if the teacher's gonna go get that national certification that hits the button and they get a bonus. You don't know if they're gonna come back. And recruiting is a tough issue, because you have to go outside to get the number of teachers that you need, because we don't produce them in-state. And I appreciate very much the difficulty of building the budget over those two fiscal years and trying to guess who's gonna show up in September and make sure that you have built into the budget the classrooms, the teachers, the mix that you need. And so, I am an unapologetic supporter of what you do and how you do it. But I know it's difficult when you see items in there like your stash and money for bonuses or whatever. What it is, is trying to account for anomalies when they come up. And I think that's good management.
Would you like to continue?
I think, so we went to the next slide, showing those colors in that flat. And then, after that, you again, Mr. Grant?
So looking forward, I just wanna again highlight that we've seen strong community support for public education in Anchorage, both from citizens of Anchorage, Eagle River, Chigak area, as well as the Assembly. And the partnerships that we formed with the Assembly, the partnerships that we formed with the community members, I think, has resonated with us and are, kind of reinvigorated our, I guess my thoughts that we're gonna do what's right for students today and be mindful of what's happening in the future as well. We've got a strong partnership with Ninety by Twenty Twenty Group. They focus on kindergarten readiness, eighth grade math proficiency, or graduation rate. We now have more than, I think, one hundred individuals, organizations working together throughout Anchorage community to support that effort. We have a partnership with Arise, which is the Anchorage Realizing Indigenous Student Excellence, highlighting again the new area of kindergarten readiness, highlighting school climates and social-emotional learning, as well as third grade proficiency. And that's been established for a couple of years now. And then, of course, the partnerships that we have with the municipality, the people who are collaborating, and then also the program for students to learn how to program computers. I don't know if you guys saw the press release that came out a couple of weeks ago, but municipality providing computers, MLMP and AWW, we provided the monitors, the mice and the keyboards, and trying to get those into the hands of students and expand their excitement around technology and programming at home. So I think that's a, again, one more example of how we're working together and what that partnership looks like. I will say, we also continue to hear positive feedback. You know, there was a recent event with the military commission coming in, trying to understand where the community is with our military population. I continue to get positive feedback from military personnel who are transitioning out and just thanking us for the support that our city provides. And when they talk about our city, they talk about definitely the organizations, the public, and how they appreciate their service, and then what the educational system means for their families when they, you know, transfer every two to four years. And great value of that. So we look forward to being in front of the Assembly in a couple of weeks, on the twenty-fourth, to present our budget and get the certification at the upper limit. We're also monitoring and engaged in listening to the conversations that are happening down in the legislature. And I believe that session ends on the twentieth or the nineteenth, so we'll be monitoring and working diligently to support public education throughout that process. But I do wanna again thank all of you for your support, thank you for your questions, thank you for your collaboration and your willingness to have a candid dialogue on what we're doing for the city of Anchorage and our students.
Willie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody knows that I've asked the school district to provide a brief presentation on March nineteenth before the Budget and Finance Committee, and so I'm really looking forward to that. And the whole idea is, you know, we have a work plan with purposes, and one of them is to have a more in-depth review of the ASD budget by our budget analysts, which we don't have one right now. But anyway, with that said, we look forward to a brief presentation on the nineteenth at noon. I don't know where we're gonna meet, but I'll let you know how it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bowsky?
Did anybody see the budget that was passed by the House last night, or the Senate? Last night, the House passed it out. So I was just curious to see what, if, what impact there. I haven't seen it.
How did you?
I have an email in to try to figure out exactly what the House is doing, and I am gonna be contacting the Senate finance to see what they're projecting doing. But I think that's a crucial part. It's not rumors and innuendo when they're actually taking action that isn't quite lining up with your budget. So we need to, we just need to vet that so we're prepared. You know, whether it's, regardless of which entity we are, we are all in this together. So that's why I am keeping a close eye on what Juneau does. And just for the edification of the body, last night about midnight, the House transmitted the budget. So, it'll be interesting.
Any other comments for the school? Yes, Kathleen?
I'll just make the comment that you're right, Amy, there are risks, which is, which is why what I've talked about before, and maybe we can truly look at is, so in the past, we've always come to you and then had to come to you again, because we're looking at the upper limit, is maybe the other thing we can look at is, is the date of having to submit by the first Tuesday in March, is, could we slip that backwards so it's a little later, so it might more coincide with our state funds? And make it so that we're not doing it twice, you're not working it twice with what makes, with what makes sense? Because it does create issues for us all to do it multiple times.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Do you think, Eric?
Well, simply, in the normal situation, we're assuming they're gonna do what they did last year, and sometimes they come up with new money. So we present a budget to you in March and then later come back and say, we'd like additional authority, 'cause they gave new. This year, I think you're right, Ms. Bowsky, the risk is in the opposite direction. So we're presenting what they did last year and knowing we might have to come back and say it was less. That, it doesn't really affect the upper limit discussion, but it is a very tough situation for us. It's very difficult to know in those years where we're hoping for new money, but it hasn't come yet, or in years like this where we're hoping that no axe falls or that not a big axe falls, and we just don't know yet. It would seem irresponsible to hire on a hope in those other years or to cut on a prediction. But we're actively talking about what we do if those things happen, because I think they're not only possible, they may be likely.
Well, thank you for the budget. We appreciate that. We're moving on now down to six C, which is School District's six-year capital improvement program.
So I wanted to have our chief operating officer, Mike Abic, kind of walk through the CIP.
Hello, Mike.
He's got slides in front of him.
Good morning.
Yeah, we have thirty-five minutes. We'll get this done.
And we've only got a couple of slides on this. This is information associated with an AIM that'll be before you on the twenty-fourth of March. It's our typical annual presentation of our six-year CIP. There's not a lot that's radically different from prior CIPs, but just for your edification, the first year of this CIP, as the first year of every CIP in recent years, has been the projects that are on the school bond in a few weeks. So, year one of the CIP should look pretty familiar to you. It exactly mirrors the bond ordinance that you all adopted several months ago. It's projects, elementary school renewal projects for Gladys Wood, Mountain View, Rabbit Creek, and Turnigan Elementary Schools, and then four small, what we call building life extension projects at Fire Lake, West High School, Inlet View, and East High. Those four smaller projects total a little over two million dollars, I believe. The bulk of the fifty-nine million dollars, which is what's on the school bond, is associated with those four elementary school renewals. Those four schools average forty-five years of age, and that's why they're, they're in need of renewal. They were selected or prioritized for investment based on our use of two different metrics that we've talked to you about. I won't go into a lot of detail on those. But those four buildings are amongst our neediest as measured, both in terms of their educational adequacy and in terms of their facility condition. So that's year one, and that's, which on the school bond, we look forward to hearing from the voters in just a few weeks. Years two through six, so the back five years of the CIP, are a little bit different from previous CIPs, although not significantly so. Those five years identify thirteen different facilities for capital, for major capital improvements, five elementary schools, three middle schools, one high school, four alternative schools. And then, again, there will be a relatively small allocation in each year for these emergent projects, smaller projects that need to be addressed in between large-scale renewal The key, go ahead, Heather. The key elements of the six-year CIP, and I think this will get at one of the other agenda items on our meeting today amongst them is, number one, each year's proposed capital project allocation is less than the amount of school debt that's expected to be paid off in that year. So we're maintaining the practice or the recommendation that has been the basis for the last five years of school bond proposals, that we don't bond for more than what we pay off. Second, the schools that are identified on the six-year CIP are those that are determined to be the neediest based on our facility condition and educational adequacy indices. Third, Inlet View Elementary, which we've talked to you about before, is on the CIP in year three. It is, so it's on the CIP for an eighteen million dollar project, which would be essentially the two thousand seventeen school bond if we moved forward without changing the CIP between now and then. However, there's a lot of questions out there, both in the district and in the community, about whether that's the right answer for the Inlet View school. It's a relatively, well, it's our smallest neighborhood elementary school in terms of student population. It is a very needy building in terms of its condition and in terms of its educational adequacy. I mentioned eighteen million dollars. It'll take that much money to both extend its life twenty to thirty years and bring it up to our standards in terms of providing the right spaces for a twenty-first century elementary education. So our plan is, should the CIP be in place, would be during the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year, we would engage the community and the school in a conversation over the future of Inlet View Elementary. And without being too bold, the decision needs to be made as to whether or not the building would remain in service as an elementary school, whether it could be put to an alternative use, or whether it should be surplus. There's other permutations of those options that will be discussed, but those are, that's basically the framework for the conversation. That conversation would take place over the fifteen, sixteen school year in advance of a decision of whether to put it on the school bond in two thousand seventeen. So it's in the CIP as if it was fully funded, but that does not represent a district commitment to actually complete that project as described here. There would be a secondary conversation that would take place in the meantime. So I know that addresses a question that I've talked with Mr. Flynn about and others at the school and in the neighborhood, and there would be a robust, to put it mildly, I would expect, community conversation over what Inlet View should be for the next twenty or thirty years. The last key element of this is that there are three separate allocations for the West Roaming renewal in the project, or in the CIP in years four, five, and six. There's already been six or seven million dollars allocated towards planning and some renewal work at West Roaming in previous year's bonds. The actual work plan for West Roaming has not yet been developed. There's a board-led steering committee that is, that is building that work plan right now. That will be developed and endorsed by the board long before these allocations are actually ready for school bonds in the out-years of the six-year CIP. bonds in, uh, in the out-years of the six-year CIP. So we don't, with the other projects, we have pretty good ideas of what work would be required. The design work has not been completed, but most of the planning work is done. That's not the case yet for West Roaming, but that planning effort is underway. So with that being said, there's now, there's three slides of tabular data, which is, I, I'm not going to go through it line by line. It, it'll be available to you in the AIM, which is, uh, on its way to the clerk now. Um, so you'll be able to see that in, a- and you'll also be able to see what the differences are, um, between the proposed, uh, CIP and last year's CIP. So there's some description of those differences as well. And with that, we're available to answer questions.
Mr. Flynn?
Mike, can you mention briefly?
I'll get to you.
What was the, uh, amount for the, uh, life extension for Inlet View?
For this year?
Yeah.
Five hundred, or five hundred thousand? It's for the domestic water, uh, piping system replacement, five hundred thousand.
Okay. Do we know we have a problem with that, or do we think we have a problem with that?
Well, we know we have a problem with that. It's a, uh, it, we know that because of, um, the maintenance effort that's required to keep the water system in good shape.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnston, ma'am.
Probably I'm not the only Assembly member that's been getting phone calls and, and Inlet View is one of them, but in that conversation on Inlet View, this person said that there's a draft audit of facilities out there. Are we going to be seeing that?
The, the, the board requested and, uh, the preliminary draft of a review of our facilities department, our, our capital projects effort, um, has been conducted by the Council of Great City Schools.
And I have a lot of respect for that.
Yeah, we do too. We've used them multiple times and we're planning to use them on, uh, other reviews, uh, in the near future. Um, the preliminary version has been presented to the, the district. It's in the management review phase right now. I believe there's a tentative plan to present that to the board, uh, for the council to prevent, to present its review and for the administration to present its, uh, preliminary response at the end of the month.
Yeah, we're trying, we're scheduling it now, but it looks like we're going to have a special meeting on the thirty-first or just that. Uh, we have a meeting on the sixteenth, but they just have gotten with the auditors to ask some questions and clarify some stuff. So the, the, our next Monday's meeting was too early. The next meeting we have after that is the day before the election, which I thought was too late. So we're searching for a time in between those with enough time before the election that people can look at.
Okay.
I mean, we do audits to examine ourselves. It's always a dangerous business if they come back and say you should do things differently, but we're committed both to ongoing improvement and public access to that. But it's also fair for the administration to have a chance to correct any errors that were.
Mr. Steele, sir.
Yeah, um, one thing that, that I've heard at community councils and elsewhere, uh, is, uh, is this whole thing on, uh, well, we've had presentations on school bond, bonds. Um, we don't quite know yet what the state's going to do with regards to, um, funding school construction, um, over the next few years. Um, and, uh, there, there has been some discussion that they would, would not, um, maintain the effort in the urban areas to, um, to pay the sixty, seventy percent or six, or sixty, fifty, or whatever it is. Um, but I have a concern about impact on the existing bonds that are on the ballot. And so I'm hoping, uh, whatever line we come up with that describes the situation, that we're all able to be on the same page with regards to the impact, um, of the, of the state's revenue issue or funding issue on, uh, school bonds. Hopefully, we can, uh, get some data that will help us, uh, to make sure that, and, and that's us, the city as well as, as the school district.
Ms. Davis.
Thank you. The bonds that are going to go on the, uh, for both this time are going to be safe according to what the House have done in their finance budget. Uh, they said the money that we have proposed for the bonds in fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, they, they were going to stay the same. There might be a change later, but it's not going to affect what's going to go on the ballot this time.
Yes.
And it was in the paper today stating what they did last night.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions from people before we move on? We're now down to, uh, Inlet View. Did we discuss that enough for you, sir? Do you want to discuss it some more?
I think we covered. Thank you.
Okay. We're now going down to six C, six-year fiscal plan. Ms. Johnston.
Okay, guys. So, and you and I have this conversation all the time. My first question is fund balance. With your current, because I can't, I can't quite understand this, and that could be my problem. But in your first run of this, is it not knowing what's going to happen in June and August? How much of your fund balance, your current fund balance have you used? Number one. What is your current fund balance? Let's take away the bonding. What is the growth of that fund balance? And what is the ceiling? Because I know there's a ceiling of how much you can retain.
All good questions I'm going to ask. Mark Foster, step up for some of the details, but, um, it, it, in general terms, we used, uh, how much this year of reserves? Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Right. Uh, had been growing seventeen, and not only is there a state cap, as, as you said, but the state cap over the next two years, last year and the next year, is dramatically affected by what they did with their purse one-time stable.
Yeah, and I understand that.
We're in this weird elevator that is going up and down. So we're having to manage one year, without us doing a whole lot different, though, though generally growing reserves, one year it looks much bigger than the other. And, and we, we almost hit the ceiling and then come close to, to hitting the floor because of the, the one-time money coming through that purse allocation. But, um...
So, Mr. Foster, serious, I mean, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt. That is, you're forcing me to be a pain in the butt is what I feel. So I, you know, because I think this is all part of, and, and I even right now could handle a three-year fiscal plan, but to have no fiscal plan whatsoever and know that you have fund balance. So could you first answer my, my first couple of questions?
The year-end fund balance projection that the board has been working with is approximately sixty million dollars, of which twenty-five million is set aside or restricted to, it's really the bond reserve.
The bonding, so, so we're dealing with thirty-five million.
Roughly. And it's that measure, that's really what we're trying to manage, to stay within the ten percent maximum allowable carry forward. And that's ten percent of our operating expenditures, including the purse chores on behalf. So that's the basic framework that we're operating in. So we're really looking to manage that thirty-five million or thereabouts to state under that cap. So that unassigned fund balance, when you look at last year's end-of-the-year, uh, projections this year and next year, we're trying to stay in that range. It's dropping down a little bit next year because of the reduction of purse chores. So it's really a thirty...
Hardly answered my question.
So that's the, that's what we're managing to is that thirty-five...
That thirty-five million.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, and, and currently you have for a fund balance?
And we're using the seventeen to manage down to that thirty-five because over the course of the year, we can see that we were going to grow above.
The thirty-five.
Exactly.
So you're basically growing a healthy percentage, correct?
We're, we're growing above that, so we're, we're going to take that seventeen to stay within our ten percent.
Okay. And, and part of this whole fiscal plan aspect is managing and watching your fund balance. And so I'm, my point is, is when you tell me you can't do it and you have to manage your fund balance, you can't every day sort of say, surprise. You have to sort of look at it. So what do you think as you look forward? I mean, you've got the skills. What do you think you're looking at for a fund balance as you go forward? Do you see a growth in the fund balance? Do you see efforts made that means that the fund balance isn't growing anymore? What do you see?
The key variables are going to amount to, what do we do in response to what comes out of the legislature at the end of April, and what does the governor do in response to that? So that's a big unknown. Um, so there's that element. The other big element we have in terms of unknowns that we're really sort of keeping in reserve is how much swing we get is enrollment. As you may recall, just a couple of years ago, we had about one-point five percent reduction in enrollment year over year, had not been projected. Almost ten million dollar swing just on that variation alone. So that, those two variables easily eat up, you know, the governor's proposal, let's just call that roughly twelve million, enrollment, call it ten. So you're usually twenty-two million out of that thirty-five just in those two factors. So that's where, that's the management space that we're in. And then the host of all the other variables that we have in terms of energy costs going up and down, you know, the swing goes down one year, we're doing fairly well in terms of fuel costs.
Yeah, I would think there's some energy saving.
And then the Affordable Care Act costs, we wind up getting hit with some of those. So you've got all those kinds of pluses and minuses.
And I appreciate that because that's what you need to think of when you go for a three-year plan. And I'm not even at saying six now, just saying three. And my, my problem is, because, you know, we went through this with the city. We went through a, a fiscal plan where we were, we were budgeting to our fiscal plan, where you looked at your one-time spending costs, you looked at your, your, um, what's sustainable, what isn't sustainable. And I just don't feel, when I look at this budget, that the conversation's been had. And, and you know, I, I go back to, and it just, it pains me. I don't know where everybody was in nineteen eighty-eight. And I'm sorry, you're going to act, you're, I'm, I'm taking advantage of my seniority here, but in nineteen eighty-eight, we moved down from Anchorage, Affairbanks to Anchorage. And in Affairbanks, the handwriting was all over the walls. We had a great superintendent up there. His name was Rick Cross, and he was being innovative with the drop in funding. And he was making tough choices, but like he was putting, he was putting the gifted teachers into the classroom. So it up the, the student-teachers ratio and, and it still didn't get, you know, it added to the program, I thought, as opposed to detracted. I mean, all sorts of neat things. And I came down to Anchorage with our free children, and the school board was increasing the budget. And I said, what memo didn't they get? There's, there's, there's all sorts of foreclosures going on. Banks are failing. Where, where are they? And I, if any of you were here then, you will remember that that was a time when we rotated through superintendents. I think what, we had four and five years. We had school board recalls. Um, you know, it was messy, very messy. And they weren't sitting in the spot that you focused in. You have a little safety here. You have, you have managed your fund balances in such a way that you could manage problems, but you're not addressing them. I feel you're not, and I, I'm going to not be able to vote for this. And what really, where I get taken personal is that our children suffered from those eighty-eight decisions. Our children were on the cusp of a whole bunch of bad decisions. And I now have grandchildren in the school, and if this leads to the same kind of chaos, it really kind of pisses me off, if you had more. So I just, I'm sorry, but I wish, would like either come back with an S version or come back with some kind of three-year, that's all I'm asking, three-year look at what you're looking at. And don't tell me you can't tell because you can tell. You do have some here and there. Um, and I'm just one vote. I mean, you know, you'll probably get whatever you want, but I'm just telling you this, this is very disappointing. And I'm a, I'm a big supporter.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I couldn't have said it any better than Jennifer just did. But, um, Mr. Foster, I'd like to go back to your math. So when you're talking about your, uh, just, so I'm incredibly clear on your fund balance. When you're talking, her first question was, how much did you have in fund balance? She said sixty million. Now that sixty million includes the seventeen million that we're, that you're spending? Or was the seventeen million above the sixty, sixty million?
The sixty million was a projection through year-end, and it would have been greater if we didn't deploy the seventeen million next year.
So then...
So that, so keep in mind what we're doing here, year to year to year.
Oh, I see what you're doing there.
Right. I've got year-end, about sixty million, what I'm managing to.
Okay.
Next year, if we didn't do anything, we expect that one to grow. So we're managing back down to that sixty or slightly below in terms of the total. So when we're spending that seventeen, we're staying within that range.
So without taking out the seventeen, your projected would have been some eighty-seven.
Would have been higher.
Would have been seventy-seven. So you're managing to the sixty?
We would have projected seventy-seven because we would have managed down to the sixty. We would not present a projection that takes us over the ten percent for the public.
I just wanted, for, for my math, I just wanted to know if the seventeen was under or over the sixty. So that's, that helps me. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We're down to ten minutes before we've got adjourned this meeting. So do you want to get the P card? One, Mr. Croft?
Yeah, been very brief. Um, the slide that I talked about showed staffing levels overall in ASG going down two hundred positions since the fiscal year twelve, thirteen budget. Uh, that includes adding some teachers, but consistent reductions in our administrative and instructional support, but mainly in administration. That is a prudent response to what we're seeing. And, and...
And what did you do this year?
This year, as you well know, but I didn't interrupt you, um, we added some teachers and continued those cuts in administration, but we're also seeing the effects of those three years of cuts. And it's a good time to take a breather in what has been a long cutting path. We've also negotiated tougher contracts, with all due respect, than you guys have, and we've seen those results. And so when you make those allegations, let's just be clear that we're on the numbers. We've cut staff and we've, we've been very careful with our funding, so much so that, as you said, we're finding fund balances from our cuts, not overages at the end of the year. We're not coming at the end of the year and saying, oh, my goodness, we have three million over in this department. We're saying we saved here.
Thanks, Mr. Croft.
And I appreciate that. I like that.
Ms. Johnston?
I like that.
We'll take this discussion later. Let's, uh, anything else on this? If not, let's move to P cards. Item six F.
So regarding P cards, I just want to start by saying that the administration has requested this audit. Um, since I've been superintendent, we've had, I believe, six internal audits conducted with the municipality auditor, and our goal is to make sure that we are looking at our practices and procedures, and if there are areas we need to improve on, then we want to improve on those. There are commendations that are there, and we can build on those commendation of positive things, and we want to do that as well. So this was a, a self-initiated kind of effort. And I think it's also important to note that when you're focused on continuous improvement, sometimes those are difficult conversations, but those are not conversations we're shying away from. And so I wanted to make sure everyone understood that. We are about continuous improvement. We ask that of our students. We ask that of our teachers, and we ask that of the district overall.
Isn't this the first year you guys have had P cards?
No, we, we had a P card program implemented in two thousand and twelve. And so we asked for this audit in the thirteen, fourteen year, and it was just recently completed.
Good.
There's a lot of public interest in this. I mean, let me be clear on three points because I've, I've been talking to a lot of people about it and talking on the radio about it. If we find that criminal conduct has happened here, we're going to refer it for criminal prosecution. That is, if somebody took district money and used it for their personal gain. That, the audit did not find any of that. That was not, and that got either reported or interpreted that way. There was no audit finding of criminal conduct, but it, we would take that very seriously and we refer it for criminal, uh, action. If people use their P cards inappropriately, that is... If people use their P-cards inappropriately, that is, made a purchase that is not authorized by that, we're going to get that money back, and we're going to stop them from using P-cards until they know how to use them well. There were some findings of questionable, not even unallowed, but once the auditors had questions on, that we're following up on to see, was it an approved or an unauthorized use of that money. And third, and this was by far the most common finding unit, if there were inadequate descriptions, we're going to follow up on those to figure out what happened. If there's a blank description or a description that doesn't adequately explain it, then we're going to go back, and Mr. Graff is doing that right now, and say, "What was this charge for?" And determine if it's authorized. So, no finding of criminal conduct that is taking something for personal gain or outside the district. But on those others two, which we take very seriously as well, we're going to figure out if it's authorized, and if it's unauthorized, we're going to take steps to get that money back.
The P-card is such a better system than the system we used before, so I appreciate this as a learning experience, because anytime you go to something like this, there's going to be inadequacies put on description, and that's for you guys to correct it. Mr. Bowsey, anything, ma'am?
Please provide a copy of the audit to the clerk as soon as possible.
It's on your municipal website.
Is it?
Yes.
Pete, you're, what, I think you have them, Pete, available in your office? I saw something where they're available to get your audit.
Our audits are posted on our website.
Can you forward a copy of it to the clerk?
Sure.
It's on the auditor's website.
I have a comment.
I would just like to say, this was our first audit of their new program, just like when the municipality started theirs. Pretty similar findings to go way back when, when we started our program. It's, like Mr. Croft said, we found no instances of illegal use or personal use of this, questionable things, because the procedures aren't very well set currently in the school district. They have now asked for our procedures, because ours have been a work in progress, and I think they're going to pay, consider implementing some of those things. It took us years to implement a dislodged purchase as PMP, and we finally, finally put that in place, and that's clarified a lot of things that were questionable before. So, I think it was a very positive audit. I think it was something that the school district wanted to see, to see how this program was doing. Before P-cards were implemented, they were cutting thousands of checks for $2 to $5 items. And when we did our very first purchasing audit that the superintendent here, I don't know, four, five years ago, we quoted it out to them, this was very inefficient, so they brought this program in. The double-edged sword of procurement cards is, it gives you visibility. Before, no one knew what was being spent. With P-cards, it's all visible to everybody, and so, it may look like, "Oh, my God," but it's not. It's a step in the right direction, and I think that next year, we're going to do the same audit. I'm sure you're going to find a lot less, just like, I just released a P-card audit municipality. It's in your box today, and there's a few questionable items in there too. But it's a great program.
Can I get that early LOA audit of the P-card program? They said there was one thing you just started out. Is that on the website as well?
Yes. Well, no. We don't post our internal audits until the assembly has accepted them with an AIM.
But that one was done eight years ago or seven years ago?
Right, oh yeah, they're all on our, on our website.
Mr. Gray Jackson has a comment. Thank you, Pete. You do a great job.
I'd just like to, again, kind of add on to what Ms. Plunkett said. This is the first shared services that we've done between municipality and the school district. It saves both governments money. They fund one position, just one position for that huge district. We oversee it over here. It saves them all the overhead for that position, and it reduces their contract audit costs. So, it's a, it's going to, I think it's been a win-win for everybody, and I'm very proud that the district and my hoppers were able to get this thing worked into, and it's working.
Thank you, Pete. Ms. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody knows, I'm a big supporter of the school district. I think you're doing a fabulous job. I was fortunate enough to get a copy of the audit and look at it yesterday, and if you hadn't just started the program in 2012, I would be really, really concerned, okay? Because there are a lot of issues. There are a lot of findings, and there are a lot of things that need to be talked about. And I know you have an audit committee, and when I was chair of the Assembly's Audit Committee, if I saw an audit like that, I would have further discussion at the audit committee level. So, all I'm saying is that I would hope that you would have some further discussion at your audit committee level, because it really helps to move things forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Plunkett, last comment, ma'am?
Just in addition to the audit committee, I just wanted to let you know that it's something that policy is, is starting the process to look at as well, from both a policy and a procedure process, to work on it from that angle, to tighten up some of the controls that absolutely need to be tightened up.
It's a learning process, and that's part of what we do. It's done to help us get better. Any final comments from members before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we're adjourned.